Good evening and welcome to tonight's City Council meeting. We are pleased to have Councilwoman Baker give the indication. Please rise and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father in heaven, we give you thanks for this beautiful day and for the blessings you've given all of us in Troy and throughout the country. We ask that you guide us this evening as we sit here at the council table to make decisions on behalf of the city of Troy and all of its residents, being mindful that we are one body speaking for the city. We ask that you be with those who are in need tonight, those who don't have air conditioning, those who may be suffering from heat exhaustion. Please give them a cooling place. Please give them the peace they need to stay healthy. Please be with us always. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The June 18th, 2018 City Council meeting is now called to order. Roll call, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater. Mayor Protem Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Here.
Councilmember Pennington.
Here.
Thank you. We do have a couple procedural items to address. I'd like to move the resolution resolved that the Troy City Council hereby excuses the absence of Mayor Dane Slater at the regular City Council meeting of June 18th, 2018 due to being out of the state. Moved by Mayor Protem Abraham and seconded by Councilman Pennington to move forward. Discussion? The vote please.
Mayor Protem Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Motion passes. The next procedural item is a resolution to waive City Council Rules of Procedure Number 10, Proclamations and Congratulatory Certificates, and approve proclamation for Engage 18. Is there someone that would like to move the resolution? Councilman Baker?
Resolve that Troy City Council hereby waives City Council Rule of Procedure Number 10, Proclamations and Congratulatory Certificates, and approves the proclamation for Engage 18 so it can be presented at this meeting.
Moved by Councilman Baker, seconded by Councilman Hamilton. Discussion? The vote please.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham.
Yes. And with that, I'd like to present to Michael Goldman Brown, the co-founder of Engage 18, the certificate, and I'd like to meet you at the podium. So what you're doing for the community is tremendous, and I'd like to read the certificate into the record. Whereas, Engage 18 is a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization founded by high school students in February of 2018 with the simple mission to get young people engaged in politics. The organization helps students become more engaged in politics within their schools by providing mentoring and resources for them to plan events such as voter registration drives. And whereas, Engage 18 also works to increase the amount of information young people have on the people running to represent them through debates, town halls, and meet and greets. As a registered nonprofit organization, they aim to increase the youth voter turnout and spark political interest in young people. And whereas, the founding chapter of Engage 18 is based in Michigan, however, they are working to expand across county and state lines, connecting students across the nation so that they may have a stronger voice in politics. And whereas, 18 to 29-year-olds make up an estimated 31 percent of the electorate, yet on average in the United States, turn out to vote less than 50 percent of the time, lower than any other demographic. And whereas, Michigan was the 15th state to ratify the 26th Amendment, and young people across the United States and our great state of Michigan are constantly feeling more out of touch with the political process. And whereas, activities young people can partake in to increase involvement in our nation's political processes include writing letters or calling an elected official, telling them about an issue that they're passionate about. And whereas, young people are encouraged to join campaigns, a political party, or political organizations. Other involvements can include talking with friends about politics, learning who your representatives are attending town hall meetings, or reading political news, circulating petitions, registering to vote, and even running for office. And whereas, communities such as Troy are always looking for election workers and encourage young people to apply to work in a polling location on Election Day. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Troy City Council proclaims July 1st, 2018, as Youth Voter Engagement Day in Troy, and encourages the young people of Troy to engage themselves in our nation's political processes on this day. Presented the 18th day of June, signed by Mayor Dane Slater. All of City Council, thank you so much for what you do and the service that you're providing to the youth of America in Troy. Could you tell us a little bit about Engage 18?
All right. Thank you so much. I truly appreciate it, and it's an honor to be here tonight. I'd like to start by saying good evening to everyone. How are you? It's good to hear. I'm here today because there's a problem in our country that needs to be addressed that few people to this day have attempted to address, and that problem is the fact that young people across our country are not engaged in politics. What does this mean? Young people turn out to vote at a lower rate than any other demographic, as was mentioned in the proclamation. In midterms, the estimated turnout is below 30 percent to 20 percent amongst people who are 18 to 34 years old, which is simply abysmal. And actually, at one of our meet and greets with Engage 18, we've been hosting a series of candidate meet and greets, I spoke with a candidate running for Congress in the 9th District, and his pollster estimates that there will be less than 6 percent of the electorate on August 7th, that's the primary date, that will be below the age of 30, which is simply abysmal, given the fact that there are so many more young people who have ideas, who want their voices to be heard, yet they don't turn out to vote. So at Engage 18, myself and my co-founder Zachariah, we look to amplify young voices and to increase the amount of people who are aware in our nation's political processes because, quite frankly, it's a necessity to our democracy that people are aware of how government works. And when we talk to people in our school, our students, our classmates, and we ask them if they know who's running for Congress, if they know who's running for their state legislature in their district, if they even know where their precinct is, we get a lot of blank stares or a lot of blank faces, and that's sad to us. So we founded Engage 18 almost as a sort of cry for help from young people to other generations. We're trying to increase the amount of young people who are not only voting, but who are engaged in politics, who are volunteering for campaigns, who are working in our nation's political processes, but also the amount of information that they have access to about politics, be it who they're voting for, why they should or shouldn't support a certain proposition based off of the simple facts, or things as simple as how government works. We actually were thinking of organizing a trip to Lansing for young high school students so that they could observe the legislature for a day and understand what the state legislature is. Because, excuse me, because quite frankly, when we talk to students, they don't even know that we have a state legislature, that there's a separate body apart from our national Congress. So at Engage 18, I'd like to close by saying that we are happy to see progress, we are happy that the city of Troy is recognizing July 1st as Youth Voter Engagement Day, and we hope that you encourage your family members, your young friends, your young neighbors, and even yourselves to go get engaged in politics. You're already doing something by being here today, and I commend you, and I'd like to
Next on the agenda is carryover items. There are none. There are no public hearings. So next would be public comments for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. I do not see anyone that has signed up. There are no postponed items, so we will move on to regular business. There are no mayoral appointments. There are two council appointments. The first is for the Charter Revision Committee, and this is a little bit different from what we usually do. There are four nominees for three openings, and so the procedure tonight will be to vote on each nominee, yes or no, by all council members present. Did I get that right, Ms. Dixon?
Almost. So what will happen is I'll call each council member's name, and you indicate your three choices, and the three candidates that get four votes will be appointed. If any candidates get less than, if we don't reach three candidates to be appointed, we'll go and have another round of selections with the remaining candidates. So when I call your name, if you would please give me your three choices. Mayor Protem Abraham.
I believe we had a question.
Oh, sorry.
The mayor indicated that he would like to be involved in this, and I know he's gone. There's no rush on this particular charter board, so I would like to propose that we move this yet to another meeting until he gets back.
I'll support that, and I also want to make a comment. I was going to bring up the same question. I did not get a chance to talk to William Murray. There are four nominees for this committee, and it is an important committee. I've had conversations with three of the four. I was out of town, and I did not get a chance to talk to William Murray, and I'd like to do that, so I was curious if we could get more time, and I would also like to table this till the next, I would support that, table until the next meeting.
Councilman Henderson, are you proposing an amendment to the motion that's on the table?
Yes, to postpone it till July 9th. I think July 9th, is there a next meeting?
Yes. Is there support for that?
Yes.
The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Motion to postpone to July 9th passes. So we will move on to the next council appointment for the Employee Retirement System Board of Trustees and Retiree Healthcare Benefits Plan and Trust. Is there someone that would like to move that motion? Councilman Baker?
Resolve that Troy City Council hereby appoint the following nominated person to serve on the boards and committees as indicated to the Employees Retirement Assistant Board of Trustees, Retiree Healthcare Benefits Plan, and Trust. We appoint David Hamilton.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Baker and seconded by Councilman Pennington. Discussion? The vote please.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hamilton, for volunteering for that decision. All right. I, too, board and committee nominations, there are no mayoral nominations or City Council nominations. So we will move on to regular business item. There are no requests for close session this evening, so the next item, I four, is request for authorization to purchase a foreclosed property resulting from the non-payment of property taxes. City Attorney Bloom, would you like to introduce this one?
Yes, I can do so because it is something that you haven't seen in a while. Actually, Larissa Feigl is in the audience and is happy to address any questions that you have as well, but she did prepare a chart that is on the table for you to look at, and it does have four of the recent instances where we have used this process to acquire property by paying, it's actually been forfeited. So this does offer us an opportunity to acquire this property, to do some blight control, and then to sell it pursuant to our remnant parcel policy. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'm sure Ms. Feigl would answer any questions that you have as well.
Are there any questions for City Attorney Bloom? Would someone like to move the resolution? Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move I four, Request for Authorization to Purchase Foreclosed Property Resulting from Nonpayment of Property Taxes, Sidwell 88-20-22-401-067 and 2019 Budget Amendment.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Henderson and seconded by Councilman Hamilton. Discussion?
Yeah, just to let people know, this is for the abandoned Taco Bell off of Rochester Hills, Rochester Road that's been there since I was a kid, and I support this because I've heard from people, talking to people last year, that they were specifically sick of that, so I'm glad we're doing something about it. I support this.
Councilman Henderson?
I second that. This property is blighted, and probably the third or fourth most asked question in the city of Troy is, is somebody going to do something on that piece of property? Finally, we can get it within our control and do the right thing and make it presentable and sell it, so.
Just a quick comment, if Larissa Feigl is on the case, I have faith in the process. So thank you for the work on this, I appreciate it.
I second Councilwoman Hoderick's conviction and sentiment, and Councilman Henderson is absolutely correct. This is probably one of the top three, top five questions that gets asked, and unlike Councilwoman Hamilton, I do remember when it was open as a Taco Bell going there in high school. So it will be a huge improvement to the area and making Rochester Road a much more beautiful place. So with that, the vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll move on to the consent agenda. I do want to make note that J 11, there is a yellow sheet, that J 11 got pulled from the agenda. And with that, is there anyone that would like to pull an agenda item?
I'd like to pull J 5 for discussion.
Any other?
I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda with the exception of J 5 and J 11.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Pennington and seconded by Councilman Baker. The vote please.
Councilmember Pennington.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick.
Yes.
Motion passes. J 5, Councilman Henderson?
Thank you. The reason I've asked to pull this is I would like to postpone this until the mayor gets back into town as well. He expressed an interest in participating in that conversation as well, and also the acting city manager's not here tonight, and I'd like him to be present at that meeting as well that we talk about this.
I would defer to the council members, but I do wish to say that this is something that is time sensitive and that there has to be action taken on this. You would need to have a special meeting. You cannot wait until the next regular City Council meeting, so if you wish to do that, then you will also need to call a special meeting, and it would preferably be the Friday before, so that would be, I think, the 7th. So preferably you would have a special meeting before that date.
Councilman Henderson?
I've spoken with the mayor about that, and I don't remember the date, but he's going to be back in town on the 24th or 5th of June, and he said that he would try to pull that off as soon as he gets back into town, so we can easily meet that date.
Mayor? I guess I'm confused as to why there would be a delay at this point when, I think all along, is we did have a delay on selecting the firm and knew that we were going to end out extending the acting city manager's role to meet the requirements of the charter. There was conversation at that time. I am going to have difficulty in the timeframe that we're talking about, attending a special meeting. So I guess I'm confused as to why there is suddenly a delay on something that I thought was a consensus decision a while back. Councilwoman Hamilton?
Yeah, and it's effective today and would be until further action by City Councils, so we could take further action at the next meeting anyway on this. Should four council members want to change the terms of this, we could do that then. I see no reason to delay this.
Councilman Pennington?
Did mayor give any reason why he wanted to, what's, you know, light he wanted to give the subject that we couldn't talk about now?
He didn't give specifics, but he did want to engage in the conversation, so I'm just passing on his sentiment with regard to the item. You know, this doesn't delay the search process, it doesn't delay anything in the process at all, other than, you know, solidifying that particular agreement, and as long as we can fit it in before July 9th or July 8th, I think is the date, right, which is what we established. The Friday before is your preference.
Right, the Friday before would be the 6th, but also if you're going to appoint somebody other than Mr. Miller, then there would have to be that discussion as well, because that would have to be effective immediately as well. So I just want to make sure that council is clear that there are a couple of procedural steps that would have to occur in that week, and it is a holiday week as well.
Councilman Hamilton?
Yeah, again, this would require a special meeting of council. I mean, if there's four people here that support this, then there's going to be four people that support this for the special meeting. It seems like a waste of city resources to do, in my opinion. If the vote is not four votes, then we'll know, but I mean, if there's four votes here that support J 5, it seems like not a good use of city resources for a special meeting.
Councilman Pennington?
What is the date that mayor comes back in town, and so Friday, the 6th, is the last date we can point someone? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, because that's my preference. You could do it up until the 7th, which is a Saturday, but that's even more difficult. We do have a holiday on the 4th, so City Hall is closed on the 4th, so, and I'm not sure, again, I'm sorry, I didn't remember the date that the mayor was coming in back in.
I thought it was the 24th or 5th, I don't recall exactly. I can find that out, but...
Well, just, I'm sorry, go ahead. What if, you know, we try to get a meeting together for the 6th, and we can't get five councilmen together, or council people together, what do we do then?
It's potentially misconduct in office if there's not compliance with the charter. If the mayor is going to be into town the week before, I mean, you do have a couple of weeks, but again, I don't know when he's coming back into town, so, yeah.
I guess we take a vote, see if this passes, and then if it passes, or if it fails, rather, we need to figure out what date he gets back in town and do it as quickly as possible.
Just for clarification, I think the motion right now, has it been moved?
What is the pending motion? I'm sorry. Is there a pending motion?
Was it supported? No.
No. Can I say something? I'm sitting here listening to everybody and thinking about it. I guess, you know, if the mayor would have reached out to me and said, hey, I need more time, I don't understand, I guess, what we're trying to achieve. I understand wanting to be part of the conversation. I, in fact, Skyped into a meeting because I wanted to be part of a conversation, but I'm a little concerned if, so what happens if the mayor comes and calls a special meeting, but Councilman Hoderick or one of us can't be there? Then do we run into the same thing? Well, if they can't be there, what do we do in that case? It seems to me that I have some other issues with this actual item, the way it's written, just from some things I've thought about, but I'm not so sure that postponing it and trying to risk having more time without understanding more what the mayor's looking for is the right thing to do at this point.
I have a similar fear as Councilman Baker. If we move this out into next week or even the week after, I, at least knowing my own calendar, I will be unavailable some of those days, and I suspect others will with the holidays coming up, and we may not, today we have six, we may not have six if we postpone to next week or the week after. I'm extremely mindful of the requirements of the charter, I'm sure all of us are, the mayor included. I'm extremely leery of risking misconduct in office, that's not what I want to be known for, ever, and so I'm struggling with postponing it further.
Just two points. One is, this was kind of dropped on the agenda, and I don't think he had, I'm not sure if he had the document before he left, and that was one of his concerns. I don't know that he's got another individual in mind, I don't know that that's the case. You know, he really didn't give me too much detail, but we've always allowed others to have opportunity to investigate candidates for charters, charter committees, and that kind of thing as well, and move things down. I understand the urgency, I understand this has got to get done, but certainly if another council member has a reason that they want to participate in the conversation, you know, I respect that.
Councilwoman Hoderick?
I do respect that. I have altered my schedule this summer, including some urgent family needs, to coincide with the day
the dates that are before us and the fact that I knew that this would be coming. This has been a discussion, we knew this back when we delayed selecting the firm because we wanted to interview the firm. And I have really been cautious and vigilant about protecting the calendar accordingly to move forward. First and foremost, because we have a city to run, we have a staff that needs the stability of an acting city manager. If there's an issue with the current acting city manager, we're already in the process of doing a search. I am not hearing of or seeing any issues with the current acting city manager that would cause me to sound an alarm, now alter my schedule so that I can be at a meeting to discuss something that we knew was going to be coming to us on this agenda. I don't want to look like I'm trying to exclude the mayor from the discussion, but this is serious business, making sure that we have stability in the management of the city at this point. So I would, you know, be happy to try to support a delay. I cannot, because I cannot be here during that timeframe for a special meeting. Maybe, I don't know how we decide whose voice is more important, but I don't think that's the issue at the table. We knew this decision was going to be coming, we knew the requirements coming from the charter. And to now be trying to schedule a special meeting during a timeframe that will be unavailable to at least one of us, I don't know if anybody else is in the same position with the holiday week coming up, I'm finding it very frustrating. Last meeting, we needed to rush a vote. Now we're delaying the same vote on that same item. Now we're needing to delay another vote. We have business to conduct. We're here, we have a majority, we should conduct our business and make our decisions.
The vote that we delayed this week that was rushed last week was actually from about four weeks ago, where everybody needed more opportunity to call people that were already on the, on the agenda, as people that wanted to be on that board and were overlooked. So some of that I just disagree with. Nobody's vote is more important than the other. I, you know, we're one of seven, each of us. The mayor asked, if it is not council's decision to allow that, then just call the vote and we'll see where that ends up.
There is a fine balance here. I think the material difference between this and the vote on the Charter Revision Committee is, this one's a time-sensitive one with pretty severe implications. Not to say that the Charter Revision Committee decision isn't important, it is, but there's, the penalty for delaying it for two weeks or four weeks can't compare to what the penalties would be for delaying this and not being able to fill the obligation. So I tend to agree that we should go appoint our city manager today, and again, if we want to take different action at the July 9th meeting, that's certainly an option.
So with that, I don't believe anyone moved J-5. Is there someone that, that would move J-5?
I'd like to move J-5, temporary appointment of city manager as written.
Support. Moved by Councilman Hamilton and supported by Councilwoman Hoderek. Discussion?
Was there not something on the table to delay that vote? Did we not get to that point?
I don't think it was supported.
There wasn't, there wasn't a motion to postpone.
I'll have some discussion here, because I think it needs to be talked about a little bit. I think some of the concern is not with the appointment of acting city manager Miller, but is the, the way the language is written in the timeframe. There was concern expressed by some on council, including by the mayor, I believe, that if we were going to continue this appointment like we knew we needed to abide by the charter, it shouldn't necessarily be an open-ended appointment. And I think this language makes people feel it's open-ended. Now, obviously, any city manager who's appointed is appointed until there's further action by city council. That's just the way the charter works, but I'm, and maybe I'm guessing, but that, that was my concern initially when I saw this. I thought, okay, well, you know, some had talked about, well, let's appoint him for six months or for a year. This actually looks more like we have just appointed him city manager, which we are by the charter, but he's not acting city manager. I don't know if it might be more palatable if it was for, you know, a length of time or something. It would make it a little bit easier for me to make it clear that he's still the acting city manager in a sense, as far as we're not permanently appointing him. I'm, I'm not necessarily making an amendment here, but I think that that's some of my, my issue with the way the language is written and the way it came across. And again, I didn't speak to the mayor, he didn't give me a heads up about any of this, but that could be something that he wanted to talk about, too. And so if we are talking about this on here, I mean, that's something I think that should be discussed.
City Attorney Bloom, I think you wanted to clarify something?
Yes, I did. First of all, I just, I did get some information from Ms. Stewart, who actually does have access to the mayor's calendar, and the mayor apparently is, she represents that he has gone from June 27th until July 8th, so that would leave just a couple of days to have a special meeting. So I think that's important for council to know. As far as Councilmember Baker's concerns, again, I fought, you know, struggled with how to draft this proposed resolution. And the way that it is drafted has accurately been pointed out, that council does have the ability at any time to change that action. It also has the ability to wait until after the search process, and that, I think, is pretty clear from the memo, is that, you know, you can wait until after the search is completed, and then, you know, you will have to approve a contract and you'll have to appoint a person as a city manager. This really is a temporary appointment, it's listed in here as a temporary appointment, and again, I didn't want to preclude council from taking any action before the search is concluded, if that, in fact, is what you wish to do. So that's the reason for the language and the way that it's drafted.
Thank you, Mayor. Perhaps we change the language to be specific until the search, the city manager's search process is concluded. Would that be the specificity that would make Councilman Baker more comfortable?
You could do that, but again, if something happens between now and then, then that makes it a little difficult. I mean, it would be difficult to take any action if something were to happen between now and then.
Just for, just for clarification, meaning, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to change course if we needed to, because the language, we'd appointed him to the end of the process? Is that what you're saying? I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you meant on that last, if something were to happen between then...
If, if your resolution says that he is the city, the city manager until the search process is concluded...
He has to be the city manager.
Then he is the city manager until the search process is concluded.
How about if we added "or" until other further action by city council? Could that, would that alleviate that problem?
This is council's resolution. I put together a proposal, and this is council's resolution, so you could do that.
But would that alleviate that problem, though? Would that give us the flexibility we needed, but still make it clear that this is a temporary appointment?
If that's council's preference, that should be fine. I just, I would encourage you to keep the language or until further action of city council.
Councilman Baker, are you proposing to amend the resolution?
I'm taking three seconds to think about it. I am, I'd like to amend it to state, effective from June 18th, 2018, until the search process is concluded, or until further action by city council.
Is there support for that?
Support.
Moved by Councilman Baker, supported by Councilman Henderson, to amend the resolution to read, effective from June 18th, 2018, until the search process is complete, or until further action by city council. Discussion?
Mayor? Again, I don't want to belabor this point, but I think it behooves this council to be reminded that the city administration is looking for stability as it runs the operations of the city, which are incredibly important. And I guess I want to make sure I express my faith in the current city administration and the acting city manager to fulfill that role at this, what has been a very difficult time in our city's history. I want to encourage staff to continue to do the hard work they're doing with the high ethics and integrity, working together with the acting city manager and with one another, locking arms, and convey my appreciation for that work and, and the efforts that have gone forward in this time of transition. I'm very appreciative, and I think I can speak on behalf of all of council, that working to be seamless and continue to deliver the first responder needs, all the behind-the-scenes efforts that go on to keep the city running and humming that we all take for granted because it's like breathing. It's very, very important that we, as a body, establish that tone of stability, focus on the search that we're proceeding with, and, and continue to offer the stability that the staff needs. I think that's very important.
Councilman Baker?
I think I just want to say that this, you know, Mr. Miller unfortunately could not be here tonight, and I, and so I feel bad. And it was a predetermined reason that he's not here, and it's totally acceptable. But for me, it's not about him personally at all. What my concern is, here we're spending money on a search process, I want people to understand the community that, I don't want it to be said, well, if you're spending this money on the search process and you just appointed Mark, why don't you just leave Mark? Or why don't, you know, if that's part of the equation, that's fine. But I wanted it to be clear that we are, this is a temporary appointment while we're doing the search process, that we're investing city tax dollars on. And I think that it should say nothing, if this passes as amended, it should say nothing for the stability of the employees in the city. I think that we absolutely, I mean, they all know we're doing a search process, and Mark is doing a fine job at what he's doing in this acting capacity. So for me, it's more about clarification of the end result for the community, so there's no question as to, it looks like we've appointed somebody and we're also spending money to look for somebody, it's just a little more confusing, I think. If we try to clarify it a little bit by adding more language, which sometimes is more confusing in itself, ultimately, I think we're better serving the people.
Any other discussion? A question for Ms. Dixon. So if this motion fails, it would go back to the original resolution?
Right, so we'll have a vote first on just the amended, amendment language, and then a second vote on the entire resolution with the amendment if the amended language passes.
Very good. All right, the vote, please.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now, this would be the vote on the resolution with the amended language. Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda are memorandums and future council agenda items. There are none. So we will move on to public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. I see that two people have signed up to speak. I would like to call up Shruti Srinivukumar to the podium. And you'll notice the lights up here, the green, yellow, red. You have three minutes. When you have one minute left, the yellow light will turn on.
Okay. Hi, everybody. I hope you're all having a good evening. I'm Shruti Srinivukumar, and I'm going to be a junior at Troy High next year. So I just wanted to share, because I recently started a nonprofit organization called Kids to Kids to help children. So last year, I donated my birthday presents and my, or some money that I had collected to the foster closet of Oakland County located in Farmington Hills. So then I asked what I can do for them this year, and they were saying that they were trying to collect bikes for the children. So my goal for this summer is to try to collect 50 bikes by about mid-July. So, so far, I've collected 12 bikes, and I've raised $525. So to help me fundraise even more money and accomplish my goal, I am holding a kite festival as a fundraiser on July 8th at Bullen Park, and it's from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM. So this is my flyer. And then at the end of the meeting, also, I have a lot more flyers, so I can pass them out. So I just hope to see you all there and thank you for the support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person who has signed up is Mehir Sahu. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mehir, and I'm an engineer profession, and I teach my part-time as, you know, yoga and meditation, how to breathe, to be stress-free and violence-free. As a mission of Art of Link Foundation, we are nonprofit all over 150 countries, and we do teach people to how to breathe, to be happy, and to be a stress-free and violence-free society. So we're having an international yoga day celebration in Troy Community Center on June 23rd, Saturday, 10:30 to 11:30. We encourage everyone to just come and participate, to be part of this diversity, what we have in this community. And obviously, we would like to welcome our founder, Shishi Avishankar, who will be coming to Detroit on July 7th and 8th, on a mission of the stress-free and violence-free society to teach a meditation technique on an event called Unveiling Infinity. So we would like to invite everyone to come, join us in this celebration. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Would any city council members or city administration like to respond?
Two great presentations. Thank you both for sharing your activities, what's going on. I know that, I know a little more about the kite festival, so Shruti, thank you for announcing it up here tonight. If you could make sure that a clerk gives copies of your flyer, we should get one for all of us. And if there's an electronic version, if you wanted to email us, maybe some of us would post it on our social media. Okay? Thank you. That goes the same for you, Mehir, thank you.
Thank you to both of you for making the community aware, both opportunities, both are wonderful things that you can do for your community members and for yoga that you can do for yourself, so that you can help your families and friends if you're in a better state of mind mentally, physically, emotionally. Thank you.
Continuing on the agenda, our council referrals, there are none. So I will move to council comments. No council comments. It's been a while. Councilman Pennington?
I'm a little disappointed that nobody had any hard-hitting comments for our temporary city manager, but I wanted to thank him for taking the helm.
Meeting's not over yet.
We still have time. But I want to thank Chief Mayor for stepping in.
It was my pleasure, thank you.
We hardly recognized you, chief. All right. The next item on the agenda are reports. Would anyone like to pull any of the reports or discuss any of the reports? All right. Councilman Henderson?
Just scanning down, we should mention the farmer's market. That's week two, and I attended the first week, missed the rain, and I hear this past Friday was a success as well, so keep up the good work. I know Cindy Stewart's put a lot of time and effort into this, and it might take some time to get this to be as big as some of the others in the area, but she's, she's got a real good start on it.
I'd like to call attention to P-2C, FBI Open County Gang and Violent Crime Task Force. Many, many people recognize that the Troy PD partners with many other law enforcement, law enforcement from other communities. What may not be as well-known is that we partner with, with the FBI, and we earned our Safe City recognition many years in a row, and this partnership is, is one that... this partnership is one that certainly helps make us a safer city. So I'd like to, one, make people aware if they weren't already aware of the wonderful partnership that we have and thank the police for all their efforts and all the partnerships. It's not, it takes time and resources to work with other law enforcement, but it pays off in spades. And in this case, this memo refers to a seizure from which Troy did get a share of some of the seizure funds. And that is always put to good use by the Troy PD.
Any other comments on reports? Next on the agenda is comments on items on or not on the agenda for members of the public outside of Troy. And I see none have signed up. There is no request for closed session. So the June 18th city council meeting is adjourned.